Is there a motion to approve the amendment? Is there a second? Melissia?
Commissioner Byrne?
Yes.
Commissioner Bennett?
Yes.
Commissioner Johnson?
Yes.
Commissioner Patrick?
Yes.
Commissioner Kerr? Chair Lundey?
I have not realized that the minutes are so extensive and I'm sitting around here chatting and looking at other things, so I in fact have not read all of them.
I believe I emailed them to you.
You looked at a draft of these earlier though.
Right.
Is there a motion to approve the minutes?
No.
Okay.
There's something here that I don't see that I heard from the discussion, and I don't know if it was just something that was said, like I sort of think it was an important thing, maybe other people don't really, but it was at one point, I remember Joe maybe said something to the effect that he didn't believe, he believed if we denied it, that Nicholson property, that the council would just go and reverse us. Yeah, and then we'd be reversed by the council, and I said, well, I think that maybe this time we'll get through the information a little more thorough. I think it's on the tape, but, and it was actually in the paper too, so it was part of it. Yeah, I think both remarks were in the newspaper, so the reporter evidently got them somewhere. So I just, I mean, can we?
I was going to raise the possibility of holding off approving these minutes unless that creates a different.
Well, the council will take Nicholson up on Tuesday, and we've provided them with draft minutes. If you correct them tonight, I'll provide them with a corrected updated version. Make some changes.
I know, but I had to listen to the whole tape to find it, and I can't do that tonight.
No, if you give us, we could, based on the sort of gist of what you described, re-listen to the tapes, find what you heard, and plug that in.
It was our discussion.
So it'd be on middle of page four there where you're pulling the motion, or discussing the motion, is that right? Well, if you, except for the fact that Joe doesn't recall saying that, if you direct us to look for that comment, we can put, we can look for it. If we find it, I can send it out to you guys so that you know what we're talking about and plug it in based on that description of it. But if there's any ambiguity, or if we don't find it, then we can change them.
Okay.
If you want to try to be something fast. If you're gonna wait till next month, it might be important for the record, but it will not be something for the city council.
No, I think it's just important for the record. I don't think it's.
Well, it's important for both.
Right, but I mean, the fact is, is it wasn't a flattering remark on either of our parts necessarily, but I don't think that, well, I would like what I said to the record in front of them, actually, because that is my hope, that this time they review through the materials more thoroughly before they make a decision. They shot more closely.
If it helps at all, I do recall that conversation. I, I just didn't put it in there because of the, you know, the legal reasons for minutes and what we put in there, but if you'd like me to put it in there, I do recall that conversation.
Yeah.
I actually do recall you saying that.
Yeah, I don't think that's the important part of it anyway. I think the important part of it is, is that this time they will review it, because I, you know, it really bothers me, and I find that.
Would you like that I put in there that Kerr, something about you stating that your hope is that the city council reads through the, the record thoroughly before making the decision? Or do you want it to be more specific than that, or?
That's good enough.
If you can paraphrase it tonight, we can just plug it in tonight, make the change.
I'll say it, yeah. As far as Joe's remark, I don't think that's necessarily relevant, but I think that what's relevant is, is the fact idea of this time maybe taking more care of it. I know that sounds snotty, but, you know, I really mean it.
Okay. Now, a third motion to approve the minutes.
Well, I, what I was more concerned about was when Joe made the, the motion to deny, and I listed several conditions that were not completed. Was all of that covered as far as you can tell? I, I thought.
Did you remember me sending those out to you guys?
Yes, I saw them.
Because I sent, okay, good. I just want to make sure you guys got that email.
Yeah, I don't remember that part, but anyways, it looks pretty close to what I.
The list was great.
Now, the, the list is in the staff report that I sent to the city council.
And that, that was your list and, and all of our list, all the things that we wanted to see in there.
Yeah, and that's, but that's also in the minutes here.
Mm-hmm.
Well, it's in more of a text form, and I, I put it in a list form because it's easier to read the staff report.
No, it was a bullet form, so that was, I think that's really clear.
Yeah, and I, that's, the, the substance is the same as the minutes, but the format is different because I want it to be more readable in a staff report.
Okay.
Going for three times. Is there a motion to approve the minutes? No would be an okay answer for me.
With, with the change.
With the change.
With the change, yeah.
Might that be a challenge?
Is there a second? Melissia?
Commissioner Byrne?
Yes.
Commissioner Bennett?
Yes.
Commissioner Johnson?
Yes.
Commissioner Patrick?
Yes.
Commissioner Kerr?
Yes.
Chair Lundey?
Yes.
Okay. We come to the first order of actual business. This is a place side judicial public hearing regarding consideration of ASR 15, Dance Bill 5, David Beneda's setback reduction request for 159 Center Street. The applicant, David Beneda, on behalf of the property owner, is requesting a setback reduction to the side yard setback in conjunction with construction of a new garage. The property is located at 159 Center Street, tax lot 4600, map 51030 DD, and in a residential lower density RL zone. The property is owned by the Sylvester Family Trust. Municipal Code Section 17.10.40, residential lower density RL zone standards, requires a minimum of 15-foot side yard setback for a corner lot. Request will be reviewed against the criteria of Municipal Code Chapter 17.64, setback reduction. Does anyone object to the jurisdiction of the planning commission to hear this matter at this time? Does any commission member believe he or she has a conflict of interest? Does any commission member believe he or she has a personal bias? Has any commission member had any ex parte contacts? Has any commission, commission member made a site visit?
Yes.
Is there a staff report?
Yes, thank you. As you said, this is a setback reduction to allow for a garage to be constructed on the east side of the subject property. This is a corner lot. We handle setbacks on a, on an interior lot and on a corner lot, 15 and 15, front rear, five, five, side to side. On a corner lot, the two street edges have 15-foot setbacks. So on a corner lot, you get, still get 15 in the front, but you have 15 on the street side. To balance that out, we would allow five on the other sides. In this case, the setback reduction is on a corner lot, but it's on the five-foot setback side of the corner lot. That is not the street side, but the interior side, and that should have been obvious from the site visit to the property. This is, like I said, this is a setback reduction. This is, in many respects, a familiar set of criteria for this commission, reviewing setback, respect, reductions at, if not every meeting, most of your meetings, and so this is pretty, not a routine request, but a familiar set of criteria for you, but I won't go, won't go through those. There are some issues that are peculiar on this that I want to touch on, and the first of those has to do with the easement. You have some correspondence in front of you from Law Office Campbell-Popkin. You have the D boundary line agreement here that was given to me by the applicant, and you have Bill Devison's email to me from late this afternoon. Here's the way I think that we need to handle the easement, and some of this is going to be contrary to what Campbell-Popkin letter seems to be pointing towards. Bill feels fairly strongly, and I agree, that you don't want to be, you know, put yourself in a position of making a judgment, yes, this easement is still valid, or no, it's clearly invalid, or yes, he now has a prescriptive easement, or no, he doesn't. That's a decision for a court to make, not, not this body. To the extent, but that doesn't mean that the easement is off limits. To the extent that it informs any of the criteria, that if you need to look at the easement to make a judgment about an applicable criterion, yes, you should look at the easement. To the extent that this is not clear, whether the easement exists or does not exist, and you're going to hear testimony on that tonight, it's the applicant's responsibility to provide you, to persuade you that there's enough evidence to meet the criteria. If the, if the easement is tied to a criterion, and the applicant can persuade you that, that easement does not pose a problem, then you're, you're clear on that point. There may be other reasons to approve or deny it, but obviously, as far as the easement goes, you're okay. Liking the flip side of that is if there is, what in your minds from the testimony you get, that there really is a question here, or uncertainty, or some potential problem here regarding easement, and that ties to a criterion, then say so, base your decision on that, and we'll go forward in that direction. So, again, it's important that you don't render a kind of decision that a judge in a circuit courtroom in Astoria needs to figure out whether this easement is or is not valid. The question is, is it related to a criterion, and have the applicants and the proponent persuaded you of something about it? It's either clear or it's not clear, in a way that allows you to make a decision on that criterion. I hope I haven't mugged the waters further there. If we do get further along, feel free to ask, but just, you know, just be careful, their criteria are the only thing that are relevant here. If the easement is tied to a criterion, it's fair game, and it's the applicant's burden to persuade you that, that there is, that easement does not pose a problem for this. I asked Bill directly, what happens if the planning commission picks me, picks your advice, ignores the easement, and let's say this does get approved, and let's say building permit is issued, and let's say a garage is built, and let's say a judge in Astoria or somewhere says, yeah, that easement prohibits that garage from being built, then the applicant may well be in a position of taking it down. In a case like that, the applicant's proceeding at their own risk, particularly in this case where the neighbors put them on notice. So I think we're still in the clear on this as long as we follow our criteria. A related issue that Chairman Lundey brought up with me has to do with fire access. In cases like this where it may be difficult slash impossible to drive fire equipment onto a site, that, that often comes up in a town like this, not surprisingly, the, the answer from the fire department is, I'm gonna say always, but I probably should say almost always, we would not drive our equipment onto the site anyway. We would park our equipment in the street and run hoses back there, and if we have to walk them back there, that's how we get them back there. We do not drive the equipment onto the property of a house that's on fire for a lot of reasons that have to do with the safety of their own people and just the way they state it. Instead, in this case, there's no problem fighting fire from the street there, it's got good access on two sides, fire hydrant nearby, they run hoes, pumpers fight a fire on the back of that property without any difficulty. So fire access, in their mind, is not at play here. Further said, and this is also something that happens almost always with the fire department on these, that I'm not going to give you written comments until I actually have the building permit in front of me. At that point, I may require X, Y, or Z, depending on what I see on that building permit. In this case, the proposed garage being very close to the property line would have to have a firewall, some certain rating beyond what you would normally go on. I think Mr. Beneda shows that on the plan, so he was happy to see that, the fire chief, the assistant chief rather, and that's really the substance of what he gave me in the way of advice on fire access here.
Can I ask you a question?
Sure.
How come, I'm curious, why it seems so backwards to, why isn't an applicant required to clear out all the easement issues before they apply for?
From our point of view, the applicant did. We got a survey from a licensed surveyor here that indicated that there was no easement on the property that affected this, and that's, from, from our point of view, up to that point, takes care of the issue. Now, we also notified any property owners to see if there are any issues out there that we aren't aware of, and in this case, they come forward with one. So I still, I still think it's, it's up to the applicant to persuade you that it's either irrelevant, or that it's no longer in play, or that we can build this and still comply with the easement, or something along those lines. I don't know what the applicant's going to tell you on that regard, but, yeah, our procedure does call for a survey on almost every project like this, and one of the things the surveyors do is show if there's an easement on the property, and they didn't in this case. I don't know whether it's because they missed it, or they considered it and decided it was no longer effective, I don't know. It's a licensee who's willing to stamp his or documents. From our point of view, that's good, and I, I don't usually go back and put some on the details.
Thank you. Do they normally go to the title company and, and check to see whether there are changes like that?
Yeah, my belief is that they start at the title company, but when I've been up at the county looking at these records, there are always surveyors in there doing the same thing, so I think they usually go beyond just a, from their title report and do their own research. But yes, it does involve a, a look back at that written record at the county of, of those kinds of documents.
So the, the easement itself, that, are you saying that, what, so the easement is for the right-of-way for emergency vehicles? No, right-of-way, is it the right-of-way for utilities? No.
No, it was for pedestrian and/or motor vehicle access to the back part of the property, or to lots beyond that.
I believe only pedestrian.
Yeah, I guess it says pedestrian.
Is it possible that they're less, unless they go for garage?
Okay.
So that's all I have for you in the way of a staff report. I'll try to answer any questions about this, but I'm not sure there's much else I can give you on the nuances of that easement.
And is there any additional correspondence beyond?
You've got all of them.
The pertinent criteria to be considered are the other than the staff reports, and listed on the criteria sheets next to the west door. Testimony, arguments, and evidence. Testimony, arguments, and evidence must be directed toward those criteria or other criteria in the comprehensive plan in Municipal Code, which the person testifying believes shall apply to the decision. Failure to raise an issue accompanied by statements or evidence sufficient to inform the decision maker in the parties, an opportunity to respond to the issue, excludes appeal based on that issue. Prior to the conclusion for the initial evidentiary hearing, any participant may request an opportunity to present additional testimony, arguments, or evidence regarding the application. But this occurred to me, I asked this before. This is the initial evidentiary hearing, since we didn't actually hear the matter two months ago, right?
Yeah, I did check, you didn't open the hearing, because nobody's here to testify on it, you just delayed it at the applicant's request. So this is the first evidentiary hearing.
The planning commission shall grant such requests by continuing public hearing or leaving the record open for additional written testimony, arguments, or evidence. Persons who testify or have first received recognition from the chair state their full name and maiden address, and if appearing in a representative capacity, identify whom they represent. Is the representation by the applicant?
Yes, my name is David Beneda. I represent Fred and Margot Sylvester, the Sylvester Family Trust. Address, post office, Box 648, Old Avenue, Park, Oregon, 97120. What I brought in addition to the drawings that I submitted was a site plan, and I think, Mark, you had also printed out a, a drawing showing the grades of the adjacent street relative to this project, and I think it's really significant in that it really demonstrates, I think, the hardship that exists with this particular piece of property. As Mark referred to in his staff report, our actual side yard setback, because again, we're on a corner lot, the actual side yard setback on the east side of their property is five feet. The survey shows, I believe it's 15.7 feet from the existing corner of the house here to the property line. So theoretically, by, if we build a garage 10.7 feet wide, we could meet the five-foot setback. The problem with that is that center street, as you probably witnessed being out there, is extremely steep, one of the steeper streets we have in the beach, but also the fact that it curves up to a hemlock here. You can kind of barely see it in my, my enlarged pixelated sight plane, but that creates a certain hardship in my mind at least, and hopefully yours, in that access to this portion of the site is extremely awkward in terms of either parking a normal vehicle, or in their case, ideally, they'd like to be able to par, par with the trailer. So logistically, coming up center street and curving up, it just is not physically possible to back into a 10-foot parking space or a 10.7-foot garage, just because of, again, the, the turning radius that you would require backing up a vehicle or even driving a vehicle in. So it's really necessary, in order to do that, to have a wider garage. So hence the request for a variance to allow the garage to be wider and reduce the side yard setback from five feet to two feet. So that's really, really kind of the justification of the logistical problem of accessing the remaining 15.7 feet of the, of the west portion of that site. I'm gonna let Fred Sylvester actually testify after me as to the status of the easements and kind of address any questions you have regarding that, but I did want to just kind of state what I saw as the hardship situation due to the slope of this existing location, and the fact that if we had a flat site with a standard street, a 10.7-foot wide garage with a five-foot setback could in fact work, but in this case it can't, just due to, again, the logistics and the slope of the site. So that's the hardship I hope to convince you of, and hopefully it's successful, and I'd love to answer any questions. Yes?
Yeah, what about the sunroom, the new sunroom? I see on this, where is that going?
It's actually going right back here. The Sylvesters is, is very, it's in the very back portion of the property here, of the existing house. If I can draw it up here.
But the sunroom also is, is requesting a side yard setback as well, right?
Yeah, correct, and really, the sunroom is kind of a, a little bonus room off the end of the garage. That was frankly an add-on. It's not quite the same criteria as the garage, as for obvious reasons, because it involves a vehicle. But the Sylvesters also own this adjacent property, and they made some substantial landscape improvements to it. In fact, this aerial photograph of the property shows a previous residence that they've since removed and landscaped this entire second lot that they own. So it was really a request of the Sylvesters, while they had the opportunity to build here, hopefully, that they could put a small pretty house at the end of the garage, and that's all it is, just for the further enjoyment of their garden that they've developed on an adjacent lot.
Okay, and where's the shed on, the neighbor's shed on your drawing?
Um, it's actually right here.
And it's really right up to the property line?
Yeah, right up to the property line. In fact, I can show you from the survey where that is, and I don't know, Mark, if I actually submitted this or not. I don't remember, may not believe it, but here it is, right here.
So that must have happened a long time ago.
That's a, 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 I can't remember.
What's on my, yeah, there you go. The change of background.
It is in the packet there.
That is in the packet, and it's a garage flashhead that was built many, many years ago, and I guarantee it was known before the variance ran it for it.
So how far will the garage be from that shed?
For the survey, that garage is at one end one foot off the property line, and the other end 1.39. So it's going to be right around, all about, at its closest point, which will be this corner, will be 3.39 feet away.
But what's, there was some mention of the eaves of the shed being over the property line?
It, it extends, the eve does, of that garage does extend further to the west, that's correct.
So then how, how far will the?
How far will the?
The eave wall of the garage be from?
That eve?
Yeah.
Fred, do you have any idea how much that eve overhangs the existing garage?
Yeah, it overhangs about a foot and a half.
Okay.
And that doesn't show it exactly, that doesn't show the garage on there.
No, that's correct. So it sounds like it's going to be about two feet away from the, from the firewall that we're going to build on the end of the garage, because, again, Mark alluded to it, but we're going to be required to build a one-hour firewall at the end of the garage due to the proximity of the property line. So in terms of fire protection, again, having done projects like this with Bob from the building department and Mark, Matt, from the fire department, I'm, I'm fully confident we're going to have a firewall, and a barricade, by the way, too.
Can I just, I just want to, I have a two question. Okay, so you were asking to be how far from the property line with, with the firewall?
Two feet.
Two feet from the property line?
Correct.
And the garage, the eaves of the garage, eve of the shed rather?
Right.
Is over the property line, so how could you have two feet between the eve and the firewall? It doesn't seem to be that accessible.
It's, yeah, let me, let me get it, I don't have any.
We do.
We have a, right there. Cool, I'll do it in color. So actually, the shed is right here, it's got a flat roof, and Fred, you said the eve was about 18 inches?
Right.
So that's 1.5 feet. The property line is 1.39, so about 1.4 feet per the survey. So that's like a tenth of a foot difference, right? And we're going to be, with the new firewall, two feet. So two feet minus 0.1, we're going to be about 1.9 feet from the end of the eve. So this is your answer. From the end of the eve to the face of the firewall. That's my theory. Hopefully it holds true.
So you're saying, so in other words, so that eve only extends?
18 inches.
Three inches over the?
0.1 feet or? .1 feet or two inches.
Okay.
Yeah.
Only two inches over the property?
Correct.
And how high is that even around?
It's kind of hard to say exactly. That garage has a flat roof, it's like, it's like, it's like, probably about an eight-foot ceiling, so, yeah, and then there's some slope to the grade right there, too. So, you know, this, that distance right higher might be at the most likely.
David, there's a Google Maps picture in that document.
Great.
Shows that. It's in the Hopkins handle.
Oh.
Yeah, it's not in my material, sorry.
Okay.
The proposed garage, or apparently it's closer to being 10 feet by 10 feet, so we can tell it's at the scale. Just like this.
And 10, 10 and a half feet.
You know, probably, I don't see something on the drawing, I don't see a garage on existing two-story house. I don't see where the old garage ends.
It's.
I don't know. I don't know.
Yeah, are you looking at?
I'm looking at this Sylvester Garage Edition.
Okay, let me, do you have sheet A 2.0 right here? This is?
Yes.
Yeah, here's the existing garage right here. Here's the proposed new garage.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
So you're going to extend the garage, what's, where the old garage is, what's going to be? Is that just more garage?
Yes, correct.
Okay.
Yeah. Yeah, so this North elevation two on sheet A 2.0 does show the existing house, the proposed new garage, and even the existing shed.
So the end product is going to be an additional garage next to the original garage?
Correct.
Okay.
Any other question before we dive into easements?
I think this is the right, if this is out of order, somebody let me know. But actually, it is, Mr. Sylvester's going to also be, I'll ask at that time.
Okay. Great.
Leave those pictures, David.
Sure, I definitely, here's a, here's a sight.
All right, are you done?
I believe so.
Oh, okay, I hadn't looked into that.
I'm sorry.
Okay. Thank you. I'm Fred Sylvester. My wife, Margot, and I are here. And our mailing address is presently 5591 Twin Creek Road, Salt Lake City, Utah, 84108. Let me give you just a little bit of history. In 2011, after coming here for several years for vacations, we stayed a month and ended that stay looking at houses around Cannon Beach. And we closed on the house on 159 Center Street. We bought it from the Sandstroms, and actually, it's the day before Thanksgiving, 2011. We got word that the DiMartini property, which was next door to us to the south, between us and what I call the governor's house, but the log cabin, and there was apparently some interest going on, so we sharpened our pencils and decided we didn't want that view taken from us. And so in 2013, I believe, we purchased the DiMartini property, which is the property located immediately south of our house and the 10 feet of the two lots immediately above our house. I want to clear up some dates. I wanted you to know those dates, in part because I see some of the correspondents make some reference to me doing something naughty in 2005. I may have been here on vacation, I can't remember for sure, but I certainly didn't own any property at that time. What happened after we bought the DiMartini property was in terrible disrepair. The building, if you could call it that, that was on it, was a two-room with an add-on bathroom in the back, had no foundation, was mostly on blocks. Some of the blocks were missing. And so almost two years, two years ago in May, we worked with the fire department and donated it to the Cannon Beach Fire Department, and they burned it down in May. We since have cleaned up the lot. We've decided that it's such a beautiful neighborhood that there's no reason to put another house there, so we put a nice garden in there. And I mentioned the fire department because there was some question about fire access to the lot. We were able to burn down that house pretty easily with no fire trucks accessing that lot. They had hoses hooked up on the hill to the hydrant, they had the nozzle truck down on the road in front, they had a pumper truck down on the road, and we had kind of a nice party that afternoon. So I know there's, that should not be an issue. What is an issue is that at the time we were ready to close on the DiMartini lot, the title company found an easement in the records dating back to 1946. It's found in Book 186, page 185. And the easement was a reservation by the family that owned the lot that the DiMartinis were buying, as well as the two lots above that. Now, those all had numbers at the time. One and two were up on the hill, seven and eight, as I recall, with the property I have and the property the DiMartinis have. The DiMartinis basically needed access to get in to build the cabin on that property. They bought the 10 feet on the back of the two, one and two lots on the hill above. The interesting thing apart about that is that the reservation of easement was a reservation of a walking path to access their property. And in the event that they build a garage on Lot 2, they would have automobile, automobile access to that garage on Lot 2. If you look at the survey, and especially if you look at the contour map that David provided, you'll see that there is almost no possibility of building a garage into the hill undermining the house that exists there right now. In fact, I don't know any way on that steep a hill you could ever build a garage now. Whether that hill was that steep in 1946 or not, it's a little hard to tell. There is one other mention of another lot. Why, I'm not quite sure, but if you look at the tax records, and I happen to have a copy here that you can pass around, if you look at, yeah, I hand this to you, Mark.
That's essentially the same map as this, which is in the back of the record.
And if you look between Lot 4301, these are tax lots, and 4302, 4,500 and 8,900, there's a tiny little square. As I was doing research at the county clerk's office, I asked to see that in more detail, and that is actually listed as Tax Lot 4301A. I tried to scale it, it's a little hard to do, but it's something like eight by 10 feet There's some indication in the documents that were submitted that, that the owner of that has some sort of prescriptive easement across the DiMartini property. I don't see what that easement would need to be for, certainly not a car to go on that eight by 10 piece of property over there that's not been maintained for quite some period of time. When the issue of easement came up during the closing, we objected, saying, well, I guess we can't close if there's an easement. And the title company would not insure against the easement. So I went back to the property records, as did the lawyer who was representing Mrs. DiMartini, who was in her 90s at the time. And we found in the books, Book 874, pages 00280, on, we found a boundary agreement. This boundary agreement was entered the 28th of June of 1995 between the subsequent owners of Lot 1 and 2, the Wyandots, and the DiMartinis. And it's very interesting, because it says, nobody knows where that property line is. And so what we're going to do is we're going to reach in the agreement as to where that east property line is to the DiMartini property, including the lot they had, as well as the access into it from Center Street. And I find it unusual that the lawyers who provided you with information fail to mention this document, because it's crucial, because this document involved not just a settlement of the disputed property line, but in paragraph two of this, "The Wyandots and the DiMartinis", these are the property lines of the two adjacent properties, "for themselves and each other, quit claim to the designated party occupying the respective property, any and all interest in the real property lying within the located property description defined above." So what they did is they established the property line, and then they said, "And if any of our properties on your side, we're giving it all to you, any rights, title and interest in the property." And they said that to each other. They went even further, and they said, "The parties execute this agreement in full settlement in any and all claims and rights regarding the location of the common boundary, or easements or mutual releases, and all claims are released, and no action shall exist regarding any property issues to the date of this agreement." So not only did they extinguish the easement, but they said, not only did they agree to devise the property to each other, but they agreed that all easements would go away as part of that. Now, I practiced law for 35 years, but I don't practice property law in Oregon, so I went to a lawyer in Seaside and asked him just to read the agreement and tell me what his interpretation was. And I just gave you his interpretation, which coincided with what my interpretation was. So in terms of an easement, there is none. It was extinguished in 1995. More importantly, it wouldn't be practical anyway, because there's no way on Lot 2, the house up above is built on Lot 1 and 2, there's no way on Lot 2 to build a garage in order to perfect that automobile easement other than just a walkway. So I thought, I thought that should be important to note. The other thing that's kind of important to us is, that's, that's really a nice neighborhood. I'm really an avid fisherman, and I have a really nice boat, and I park it there. It would be much nicer, not only for my boat, but I think for my neighbors, if it were parked inside. If you look at the garage as it is drawn on the drawing, one of the things I don't know that David mentioned, when you get to the back of the property, and you look at where the proposed garage would be, we're well within the five-foot extension. In fact, I measured it, I think by having that 13 and a half foot garage, we end up at 5.8 feet from the garage to the property line in the back. So because the way the property line goes, and again, you'll see it from the survey, the way the property line goes, when it gets near the back of the shed, that's where the eve hangs two feet over onto our property, because the property line goes right almost through the foundation of the back of that shed. In the front, we're a little closer to the property line, that's where David was talking about, there's two tenths of a foot where it hangs over. But in the back, it hangs over more, but it will be farther from the garage at that point. So really, the setback variance is going to be near the front of our existing garage. We think it will be better for all the neighbors, we certainly think it will be better for us, and we hope people consider it. Thank you. I have, what I mentioned before, something I'm curious about. I'm not a fisherman, and I've never hiked a boat, but it seems to me that if you have a good size boat, you're not cutting into the water on the beach in Cannon Beach. It's true. Where do you put it in the water? In fact, my friend has the jury that we put him in front of, it's all a bana, but... I know there are some people who have, for a sort of grandfather vision, being allowed to do that. Yeah, well, actually, it's, it's a pretty popular sport. I fish the Columbia and I fish Toluca Bay. And starting in August, when salmon season opens through October, I spend as much time as I can doing that. And I just got back from pulling some crab out of the Columbia and seeing if there were any springers yet, so. We're spending almost half time here, but we're, my wife's wrapped up her business. I hope to wrap mine up by about the first part of April, and we'll be spending more time here. The reason that I was, I hadn't envisioned that you were going popular residences in both directions, but it was seeming as though it would, if I, if I imagined myself having a boat, it would seem to me that I would be more likely to store it near where I was putting it in the water, and it would not be the same type of issue. It's about, it's about 21 miles to Garibaldi to put it in. It's about 20 miles, I think, to Hammond to put it in. It's really close to her place I fish, by having it right there. Thank you. Any, any other questions I can answer? Thank you. Are there presentations by proponents? Are there presentations by opponents? Is there a staff response?
Two issues came up during testimony I wanted to quickly respond to. One, David mentioned the hardship, of course, that's a variance criterion, not a setback reduction criterion, criterion are different, and hardship is not an issue for setback reduction, it is for variance. The shed, that you were asking about, the neighbor's shed, when that appeared, and I actually looked back on that, and here's what I can tell you, it was not there in 1978, and it was there by 1991. So somewhere in that fairly broad 20-plus year range, it got put there. I couldn't find any record of it coming in, or why we allowed it that close to the lawn. Back over, I couldn't answer that question. Somewhere in the 70s or 80s it appeared there.
Do you know how, how long the Central Street has been in existence there?
That was platted long before Cannon Beach was a town, but how long it's been developed, I couldn't say.
Does the applicant wish to make additional statements? Not if you don't have any questions. Since there's no reason to believe that the hearing is being...
Since there's no reason to believe that the hearing is being continued, I close the public hearing and move to consideration.
We'll reduce the criteria and question it, because the question of impact this, the only thing I could see was the question of getting any approach into the setback and loss of extension based on privacy, which either would be employed by a meeting of property. But since there's no one there.
I'd actually like to ask one question. The sunroom, will that be five feet from the property line?
Yeah, more so. Because that's a...
Well, I do think that if I were their neighbor, aesthetically, I would love to see that boat in the garage, having it backed down a little bit, because it appears in my own neighborhood.
I agree.
I think it makes for a much cleaner-looking city, and streets, and whatnot. And since there was no building permit for the other garage, I don't know how frequently the other garage that's sitting on the property line is used. Shed, or shed, okay.
I don't want to imply that there was no building permit issued for that garage.
No, but I mean, simply sudden unknown at this point. And the fact that the property veers off, giving a wider, closer to the five feet, that the further out it goes, is demeaning the norm.
Well, I know that the easement issue is not before us anyway, but I'm just saying, I at this point, I would not be willing to agree one way or the other that there's an easement there. I mean, because there's two different points of view. One point of view says that the easement has been eliminated, and the other point of view says it still exists, so I don't, in that case, we're not, we have no way of
Right.
determining that, and, you know, there's obviously something to be said on both parts. It's a very dense neighborhood. It appears dense, but when you go in there, it just seems very compact, it's sort of hanging onto the side of the hill. And to tell you the truth, I was afraid to drive down Center Street. I heard the words, I couldn't do it. I couldn't get up the gas tube. But I just, it's just very dense, and there, you know, two...
Don't you admire him for being able to park that boat between all three?
I guess I'd admire a pride in her, which...
I'm a gentleman.
I'm not. But, I don't know, it just, it's, seems very compact in there, and it just, you know, less than two feet, I don't know, between buildings, I can't, aesthetically bothers me very much, really, but I can't find anything in the criteria that twelfth of those.
Well, there's a couple of things that come to mind for me. Number one, the amount of square footage that's owned by the applicant means that there are a lot of other alternatives that could be looked at. The other thing is, being a foreign boy, backing up a boat in that space is no problem for me. So anyways, the necessity for it, in some ways, seems excessive. So that's...
So the end result will be a big double-wide garage sticking out, even with the house, or I can't tell if it sticks out in front of it, or if it's even.
It's right next to the Gissing Rock.
Right, but I can't tell if that system brushes a little bit forward of the house or not, or if it's flush with the house. But anyway.
Close enough.
Okay, well, it just seems that, well, it just, it makes for much less space in the neighborhood. Closes it in more. And that's, again, that's not, this isn't an aesthetic criteria that we base this decision on, but and there's no hardship with that.
I have a question that I didn't think they asked, Mr. Bedeva. Would you be willing for me to turn it up? Is there a reason that it would be impractical to extend the present, to lengthen the present garage back into the backyard?
Yeah, it would really be prohibitive grade-wise. If you, if you can see this, these contour lines, and this is the existing garage, it's dropping, this site really dishes, you can see the way these contours slope around. Each one of these contours is two feet. So this isn't a exact survey, but there is a physical drop of two, four, six feet. And if this is the standard length of the garage, which I'm sure it is, we're gonna be down a minus six feet below the grade of the garage, so...
And that's more of a problem, well, okay, I guess you can see that
Yeah, it's physically...
the property line, it's not escaping.
Yeah, physically, it would just be extremely difficult to accomplish, to simply, you know, add on to the garage.
To fill in or retaining wall and whatnot.
Oh, yeah, plus, one thing we're running into when we, you know, continue to develop Cannon Beach is that in a situation like that, you can't just throw fill at it, because it adds to the tendency for the entire hillside to slide down. So what you have to do, then, is get in there and drill earth anchors, and support the structure on an earth anchor system, and then support the garage floor over framing instead of slabbing grade, probably. So what we're trying to do, when we do, if we were able to do a garage like that, essentially, we'd be building it up on piers up in the air. And, you know, it'd probably be the deck of the garage, or the garage floor would probably be somewhere in the neighborhood of eight feet above the grade is now. So it, logistically, it just would be extremely difficult. It really is, it would be a practical impossibility.
At what point, footage-wise, does this garage get to the five-foot property line?
Let's see, that's... You can see the shed, and this, my site plan here is based on the survey, so we imported the survey information, and then added the garage design to it. Pretty much right at the rear wall of this adjacent shed, would we be at the five-foot point? I think by the time we get back here, we're closer to six feet, but at that point, we're right about five.
And the size of that shed, do you have the pipeline?
Uh, no, I don't. Yeah, I don't, it's basically the size of an equivalent of one part of the garage, basically. Got help, hopefully?
I almost bought a house, I hardly ever buy a house, but I almost bought one, and that's parking on a platform out over, I don't know, twenty or thirty foot or so.
It's scary.
But I'm saying it's doable.
Oh, yeah, it is doable.
I'm looking...
Yeah, yeah, the problem is, you also have to consider when you park a car in a structure like that, and put on the brakes, the structure tends to move a little car, so. Not only is it difficult to support vertically, but there's a kind of dynamic lateral load you have to design for too, so. It would be extremely difficult, and I know aesthetics isn't a criteria, but the Silvestros have done an excellent job developing this adjacent lot as a really beautiful garden. Kind of, so.
So I have a question.
Sure.
Was any thought given to having a standalone garage behind the house? I mean, obviously, someone had a structure there at one point.
Oh, back here? Well, essentially, that's what we're talking about, either extending the existing garage, or coming through here and locating it at the top of the site?
Yeah.
Is that essentially what you're saying? Even that drops down. These contours show, you know, even back here, it's down probably four feet from this location. So we'd still be looking at a similar situation of having to either add fill or structure.
It's almost eight feet.
Is it?
Because there's a tie wall that they put in there years ago.
Oh, on the east property?
Yeah.
Yeah.
That holds up.
Yeah, there's a, what Fred's talking about is a retaining wall right along the property line.
No, it's not on the property line.
Oh, it is?
It's on the twelve feet of whatever it is.
Oh, okay, yeah, that's a good show on here, if it's an area. Yeah, but there's actually, what Fred's saying is, there's actually a railroad retaining wall right here now that is holding back this pane, so even that location would be difficult. So really, that is the best alternative for a garage location.
There's a house on Pacific Street that's built that distance away from, that's that close to its neighboring house. I don't know how that happened. Never figured that one out. It's called the Bosco House, and there's a house that's right next to it, and the area of both, where the two, there's very little light and very little air that gets in there. It's just like this damp, gross, moldy, you know, the walls of both houses where they're that close, because there's no air or light getting in there, it's just, you know...
It's a great mystery.
How that happened.
No blood in my honor.
Particularly that one.
Yeah. So, anyway, I think that's one thing to think about, is, you know, it really closes off, I mean, they're so close together, and it's just just sort of the light of the whole area becomes a factor by, you know, view of someone going down the street, I don't know that that's not an issue.
Well, if you have to fire the tar and wall, you've got concerns about density of the construction, and of course, the window, having two garage doors there, too.
Thank you. I'm not gonna go into this much, other than just to say that I'm much in agreement, at least, that I think that's too close together. I don't think there's, I understand why it would be very desirable to be able to park a boat there and not have it out in front. And that it might even be desirable to your neighbors to not have a park there, that I'm not, but, so the applicant suggests that subsection E, permitting construction on a lot of unusual configurations, is relevant. It would permit construction on a lot of unusual configuration, but I guess it's not, it's not construction that needs to be done. Are we ready to vote? We're ready for a motion? Everybody satisfied that they've arrived, that they know how to vote, and don't want any further input? Discussion? Okay, I move that we deny this request. Enter a second? Enter further discussion? Malaysia?
Commissioner Byrne?
Yes.
Commissioner Bennett?
Yes.
Commissioner Johnson?
Yes.
Commissioner Patrick?
No.
Commissioner Kerr?
Yes.
Chair Lundie?
Yes.
Oh, unusual, you summarize all the votes. Am I mistaken? I think that's clear.
Five to one?
Five to one.
Yeah. It's passed.
Okay, moving on, next issue. This is also a place of judicial public hearing regarding consideration of D sixteen dash O, Frank and Valerie Swedenborg, a request for floor area ratio and setback reduction at five eight seven and five nine five Anthr Street. The applicants, Frank and Valerie Swedenborg, are requesting a variance to increase the allowed floor area ratio to zero point six five, and to reduce the side yard setback to zero, in conjunction with the construction of two two-family dwellings with a shared wall. The properties are located in five eight seven and five nine five Anthr Street, PAC slots three hundred and three oh one, MAP five one zero two zero CB, and in residential median density R two zone. The properties are owned by Anthr Property LLC, LLC, municipal code section seventeen point fourteen point zero forty, residential median density R two zone. Standards restricts floor area ratio to zero point six, and requires a minimum five-foot side yard setback. The request will be reviewed against the criteria of the municipal code, section seventeen point eighty-four point zero thirty, variances, criteria for granting. Does anyone object to the jurisdiction of the planning commission to hear this matter at this time? Does any commission member believe he or she has a conflict of interest? Does any commission member believe he or she has a personal bias? Does any commission member, has any commission member had any ex parte contacts? Does any commission member leave a citation? Is there a staff report?
Yes, thank you. This is a request for two variances, the the more straightforward, the two has to do with the floor area ratio. The floor area ratio is the maximum amount of habitable space we allow on a lot. The standard in our residential zones is zero point six for a hundred-by-a-hundred lot, eight to six hundred square feet. They are, by their count, slightly over that with this proposal. Instead of zero point six zero, they're zero point six five, and that would require a variance under our code. The other half of this request, the way we've advertised it, deals with a more complex issue, at least by my estimation, and that has to do with the nature of the proposal. The proposal consists of four-unit development. I've described it in terms of two side-by-side duplexes, and that's how I get to the variance, to the internal setback, which would allow them to make that a zero lot line development. That is, that's one way of describing it, and that's the way I've described it, that gets it before you. You could easily reach a different conclusion here by looking at the R two zone definitions of multifamily and duplexes, or two-family houses. And the way we handle those in our code, and reach a different conclusion, that goes something like this. This is not two duplexes, this is a fourplex, not allowed in the R two zone. End of the story, we don't even have to consider these other questions. So in terms of how you wanna organize your thoughts on this after you've taken testimony, that's kind of a threshold question, if you're depending on the answer to that, it may obviate the need for going further. If you do find that you can live within that description of this project as two side-by-side duplexes with a zero lot line or a common wall, then you also would need to evaluate the project for a variance to that side yard setback. It's an internal side yard, so the impact on the joint property owners is kind of nil at that point, so it gets to be a somewhat stilted discussion in that direction, too. So those two, those are the two questions before you. The applicants are here, have, um, uh, an email and a letter of opposition from their joint property owner, I believe they're a joint property owner to the south about this project. One element of their, uh, letter is a request for a continuance on this. This is the first evidentiary hearing, um, so you, um, you're obligated to draft a continuance. We've talked about how you do this before. Generally, if you can get through the oral testimony tonight, that's a good thing is hear the oral testimony, close the oral testimony, and then keep it open for written testimony on what we call a seven, seven, seven basis. And I've got the, the dates here, if you get to that point, I'll just pass those out. The alternative is, uh, what you did, essentially on the Nicholson matter in December, January, you continued it there on the basis of a request, but you just continued the oral hearing too. So, if you do it that way, continue it to, uh, the March twenty fourth hearing date, and that would just be a continuation of the hearing for both oral and written testimony. Either of those methods would solve, would address that requirement. Um, that's all my way, all that I have in my staff report.
I have a question that just occurred to me, and I think, I think I'm gonna be answered because, uh, the question is, is there anything in the ordinance or anything in our government documents that says that you can't have a house that spans two properties?
You can't? Yeah, no, there's nothing that would restrict that. You can have a large house that occupies two, let's say fifty by a hundred lots. There are cases where that's, that's done in town too.
Okay.
But the area is zoned for no duplexes. Right.
Yeah, I, I was thinking of a single family dwelling.
Four, fourplex, and I asked Mark this question earlier in the year.
Yeah.
Looks like a fourplex to me.
Yeah, the, the definitions in our code are, are important here, and I think they're reproduced in the staff report. You know, we define single-family dwelling, that's obvious what that is. Two-family dwelling, I call it a duplex here, but that's a two-family dwelling. Anything beyond that, three, four, blah, 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 those are multi-family dwellings. And the ordinance handles multi-family dwellings in a particular way. Um, we allow them in R three, the R A M and R M zones, and where else? This is an R two zone, which does allow duplexes. So, the only way this can be approved is if you handle it as two duplexes with a zero lot line in this zone.
So, it can't.
Well, I guess putting it another way is that I, administratively, I can approve two duplexes on these two lots without any, any commission approval. They're duplexes, so they require design.
Sure.
Yeah, if they have, if they require five feet between each, uh, mutual property line, that would be administrative approval, wouldn't become you, assuming that they meant the floor area ratio.
Right.
Um, and in that case, that would be tougher for them, because part of the problem is they wanna do an elevator here, shared elevator before, within four units, it only has a footprint. If you're building two elevators in two separate duplexes, it becomes
Four A or whatever.
Far more complicated, yeah. There's, there's a number of space-saving things by pushing all together, that I, I think the applicants can explain that. But, um, but that's, there is some logic to that, to their request, um, in terms of making this work, with an elevator and sage and place model that they're proposing. But I, I'll let them make that case for you.
Okay, is there a clarification by the applicant?
Hi, my name is Frank Swedenborg, my wife and I are the applicants for, my wife Valerie and I are the applicants for this project. My post office, mailing address is post office box three, Cannon Beach. We have lived in Cannon Beach for thirty-eight years. We own and operate a motel in Cannon Beach and have for thirty-eight years. About two years after I joined, or came to Cannon Beach, I joined the fire department. I have been on the fire department since that time. I am presently the assistant fire chief. I've been assistant fire chief for about eighteen years. Unfortunately, I don't, unfortunately or fortunately, I don't know a lot of you personally, but that's good, because I haven't had to come and rescue you as, as a fireman or, or an E M T. We've owned this property, uh, on Anthler Street for a number of years, and, uh, and then, and as well as operated our motel. Couple, two or three years back, we decided that it was time for us to think about retiring, do something with the business, and, and enjoy the rest of our life. So, we thought, well, we'll move to Ben, cause we have a, a son and daughter-in-law and two, two of our grandkids that live in Ben. Well, lo and behold, they decided that they wanted to take over the business, and so they left Ben and moved to Cannon Beach. Because the motel provides housing for the, the owner, operator, manager, we moved out and have been renting, uh, so that they could live there and operate the business. That's done two things, it's left us homeless, kind of, I mean, we rent, uh, not in Cannon Beach, but, uh, cause we couldn't find anything, uh, and, and, and put them on the property. The, and then having them here and us over in Ben would just reverse the op, the, the thing with the grandkids. And so, we've decided that it's in our best interest, uh, to, for us to, to, uh, to stay here in Cannon Beach, uh, be closer to at least some of our grandkids, and, and be able to help out if we need to in, in the business. This particular son, uh, was, was raised in the, in the motel, raised there in Cannon Beach, went off to school and, and college and work, and decided to come back, and it's great that he's done that. So, anyway, we, because we've had this property, that we felt that that was a logical place to, to build a house. Uh, and, and we own the two lots, adjacent lots. So, we thought, well, the best way to do this is to build something for us, and perhaps something that, that we could sell to, to two other people, and make it a, a, uh, an area that, that's, you know, a nice affordable type of house that, that, uh, somebody could come in, two other couples who are, two other families could come and live here. The, the fourth one is, the fourth unit, and, and we'll explain that to you a little bit in more detail, is, is only a four hundred square foot, basically, bedroom, uh, that's, that's none, that's not part of one of the three other units. So, that's a little bit of, and, you know, we'd really like to stay here in Cannon Beach. We'd like to be, you know, uh, continue on. Matt wants me to stay on the fire department, I'd love to stay on the fire department, and, and continue that way. This is what we'd like to do, so we can move back into Cannon Beach and, and be a, a part of the community as well. I've asked my architect, Rod Graham, uh, who is also a property owner in this town, to come and, and explain to us, to you, the, the project as we see it, and why we wanna do it the way we wanna do it, uh, and, and hopefully can keep, uh, all of us, a number of people living in their homes for a little bit longer period of time. Uh, I'd be happy to answer any questions, and other than that, I would introduce Rod as my architect. Uh, do you have any questions at this time? Yes, ma'am.
I'm just, I, I drove by and looked at it, and it looked like there were two houses there already.
There are two houses there presently.
Right.
There's a duplex, and then there's a single-family home that we rent, to, to long-term rental. The, the, the first one, uh, that you see, uh, was part of the motel at one time. We moved it over there, and, and it was a duplex at the, at the motel. We moved it over there and, and rented two small rooms. If we can find, and, and I think we have located a couple of different pieces of property in town, that we could possibly move that again, that, that building has been moved twice already. Uh, and I've moved other buildings here in town as well. If, if we can, we'll, we'll move that building to a, to another lot, uh, and continue to have it as a, uh, an affordable, if you can in this town, as affordable as possible housing for, uh, you know, a single or a couple. The, the other one, the, the, one of five ninety-five, which is a single-family house, uh, isn't practical to move. It's probably one of the oldest, one, one of the, the few old homes in Cannon Beach. Uh, also has a basement, uh, right next to a redland, uh, and it's just not a practical house to, to move. Probably one of the few houses that has a basement. Yes, sir. Did you have a question? Oh, okay. Anything else? We, we give every effort we can to, to move the one, because, uh, we, we, we feel obligated to, to, continue having as affordable housing as possible. And that was our idea.
Are you, see, I, 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 well, I guess it's gonna be explained to us about the fourth.
The four units?
Yeah.
Yes.
How that becomes.
Yeah, uh, uh, my architect, Rod Graham, will, will address that and, and explain to you and why, why we're trying to build it the way we are trying to build it. Okay? Thank you.
Hi, my name is Rod Graham, and I'm an architect of Can Architects in Portland. The address is three zero two five Southwest First. I would like to just talk about the, uh, the first, uh, item under justification is, and there's two now, because I think originally we were looking at just the F A R increase, and then we found out that we couldn't put those two together without a variance of the side yard. So, the first one is the F A R increase, and, um, the Frank and Valerie want to, they wanna build a structure that would accommodate them and other people that would come into the community to age in place. So, it had, it has certain, uh, requirements that you don't normally find in a residential facility. One would be the elevator, the other would be, um, a lobby for that elevator, cause it would have a common entrance. And the other one would be more for, you know, wider hallways, handicapped accessible bathrooms, uh, just slightly larger rooms. And we found that when we did the preliminary drawings for that, it required a little larger than the point six F A R that's allowed in Cannon Beach presently. So, it's a slight increase, I mean, it goes from, uh, roughly five hundred square feet, and that translates to about two hundred fifty square feet as a footprint, because that builds up two stories. So, it's under a ten percent increase in F A R. The other aspect is the setback reduction. And what, since the applicants own both lots, it is in effect, in effect, combining the two lots by reducing the setback to zero. And what I did, I'd like to pass out something to you, it just, it wasn't in the original packet, and I don't think the neighbor to the south fully appreciates this, but you could pass that out. It shows two, it shows on, let's see, on the left, it would be what we're proposing. On the right, it's what we could, as far as footprints go, it's what we could, uh, potentially do under the current code. And what I did is I approximated the location of the neighbors to this house, their location of their house. It's a pretty small house, it's, I think it's about a thousand square feet. And it sits back further on the lot than most of the other houses. Uh, so I showed on, on the right-hand version is what we would do, what we could do if we had to build a single, or duplex and do a footprint and have the five yard setback between lot one and lot two. And the one on the left, the diagram on the left, it shows the footprint of what we're proposing. And as you can see, it's got a lot more setback from the south property line, and would afford the neighbor a better angle, uh, common view than it would be if we were, with what we could do under the current code. So, that's the justification, or at least hopefully would appease the, uh, the neighbor. Mr. Ty, I think. The other thing, as far as a criteria we have to meet, is that, uh, oh, let me finish that statement right before, um, item A, and we also had to, um, provide the fact that this, that the, um, it meets the objective of their zoning ordinance. And what we, we feel that it does, because there is a provision in the code that to provide a diversity of individuals and families within Cannon Beach. And this is specifically, uh, focused on people and residents that would like to stay and live in Cannon Beach for a longer period of time. And they, I guess the catchphrase right now is aging in place, but it really is, it really does mean that. They could stay there much longer than they normally be able to. And it, this project serves this, uh, it's designed to serve this segment of citizens, which we feel is underserved in Cannon Beach. The exceptional or extraordinary circumstances, this is a unique project designed with features and a small area increase that allows residents to remain into their senior years. This, this, uh, the reason that we're looking at putting it all together into one building is obviously the use of the elevator, uh, and common four A. So, it just wouldn't be practical to do it to two elevators into two separate buildings. And it's hard to imagine, as far as public health and safety, how this, granting this variance would be detrimental or injurious to the residents nearby, as you notice by the diagram, it, it actually would. Because we're allowed to have the reduction of setback, it would enhance the view of the, the neighbor to the south.
Yeah, because, because you just, before we run V I Ps, you're talking to V I Ps, right?
Yeah, right.
Well, how, how does this, how is this fifty percent coverage?
Well, it's, it's, you're right, it's not fifty percent coverage.
It's just a setback.
Sixty percent coverage, really. It's just the setbacks, we could do it. You couldn't build it the way it is, because it's too much of a coverage. You're right.
You couldn't build a house.
No, but you could build toward the, the west end.
Oh, okay.
You see, and it's just that, I'm just saying you could, not saying you would.
Right.
Or, yeah, you wouldn't, you, uh, that's too much for the, the F A R, cause the F A R would only allow sixty percent, right? Sixty.
Oh, yeah.
Point six, right? Yeah.
F A R, oh, I was talking about the coverage.
Lot coverage is fifty percent, F A R is sixty.
Lot coverage, lot coverage, fifty percent, and that's what this represents.
Doesn't represent fifty, but it.
With that bridge, you could put a house somewhere.
Exactly, you could, right. Right. So, um, I think it's our contention, hopefully you agree, that it meets the policies of the comprehensive plan, and that, as I stated earlier, that it, they're comprehensive in the vision statement. It's, the comprehensive plan is to promote a diversity of individuals and families within the Cannon Beach area. And as far as I know, there's not many, if any, projects like this in Cannon Beach. But, uh, this certainly is an area, or it's a facility that would help meet underserved population of that. So, uh, as far as self, self, is this a self-imposed hardship? We don't think it is. It's a hardship resulting from the new, unique requirements of the intended. It's a hardship resulting from the unique requirements of the intended use. And it's a use that will help meet the goals of the comp plan and also put on a need which we perceive in the community. Is there any questions?
Could you address the fourth unit?
Yeah, oh, yeah. Basically, there's going to be three two-bedroom units, fully accessible. The fourth unit is a studio unit. It's about 400 square feet, and it'll have a bathroom, a little sitting area and a bed. But it's really meant for, is a bedroom. And this kind of a studio bedroom, and it's used for, would be used for guests of the residents, and it could also be used for a caregiver on a temporary basis. So that's, so it would be kind of in a supportive role on the other three units.
Would it contain a kitchen?
Might, you know, we haven't really got that far yet. It might certainly have a bathroom and might have a small sink and a microwave or something, but not a full kitchen, not that we see it at this point.
Are you contemplating a shared kitchen of the whole place? I was sort of envisioning.
Oh, no, no. No, every unit would be self-contained, yeah.
So will you be selling the other two of the other units off?
I think, I think that's the intent. This is the intent, yeah. The intent is to sell the other two units to people that want to live in Cannon Beach, that could be, you know, in the same position that we are, and have the, they would, then they would have access to, just those two other people, two other parties would have access to that fourth unit, which is just a studio unit, or as a place for a temporary caregiver or as a place for an extra guest if they came to visit or whatever. And there would be absolutely no intention of ever renting that on a nightly basis or a monthly basis or anything else. It would sit empty unless one of the three owners needed it.
And who would own that then?
My wife and I would own that if you were, we would own one unit plus that studio unit.
And who would maintain the grounds for the whole property?
We would. I would imagine that if we go through, get past this, then we'll probably have to do either a co-op agreement, legally a co-op agreement, or a condominium agreement, and at which time then it would be set up, who takes care of, taking care of and maintaining yards, you know. Presently, I have a staff that takes care of the yards over there now. And I hope that that will continue. My son will let me keep him as a staff to take care of the yards. So there would be a HOA homeowners association, most likely, or some document that makes everyone, helps pay for the upkeep.
Thank you.
Sure.
Are there presentations by components? Are there presentations by opponents?
Jen Seaverorman, P L O X 778 Cannon Beach. I have a concern that this is a fourplex and that it's a fourplex. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions for the Seaverorman? Are there, is there a staff response?
No.
And does the applicant, or does the applicant wish to make additional statements at this time?
Not at this time.
Okay, thank you. The hearing is being continued.
Yes.
I understand, I had missed the fact that there was a request for a...
Based on that last page of that Todd Dodge letter. If you decide you want to continue it in the 777 form, I hear the dates that you, I think, worked to get this back to you on March. Like I said, you can also continue at just the full-on hearing to March 24th. Either way works, if you recall.
It's obviously easier for us if we close the public hearing part. I have to say that personally, I was surprised that we had written, that we had only one written item of feedback from any of the immediate neighbors and one oral testimony, very brief. I'm kind of inclined to leave it open for further oral testimony to see whether we have any of the other neighbors. I would agree with you. I want to say a couple of things on both sides of it. One is that I'm, obviously, I'm not in the notification area. I'd be sitting down there instead of here. But I think I'm about 50 feet outside of it, and this is very much my neighborhood. I might be expected to have an impet attitude, and it's possible that there is something in that. I really have mixed feelings about this. Partly, most of the way through rereading Apokalantis, Being Mortal, one issue of that is where do people live when they're getting pretty late in life and not able to take care of themselves as much as they did before? And I like the idea of somebody doing this. And also, there are times, I would like to see this building or something like that built somewhere. And that, on the other hand, it would be a fourplex. It's a fourplex. And the buildings in that neighborhood are not tiny, but they're not that big by my judgment. I think it would be, I think it would be out of scale. Not horrendously out of scale, but it would be out of scale within the neighborhood. So I really have mixed feelings about this, and I'm hoping that we would get some more input from other neighbors. I'm surprised, generally, a number of the houses in that immediate neighborhood, people living there, a couple of them, several of them, I know, you know, rather than occasional occupants.
I don't think that is what the neighbors are saying. I mean, I don't, I don't think that's relevant to this.
Okay. I think, I'm not going to push you hard for keeping it open, for oral testimony, but I wanted to put a pitch for that.
And maybe, maybe they didn't understand the application. Maybe they were astounded by it. Maybe they didn't show up for that reason. Or maybe, you know, they just, I mean, there's not that many neighbors on that street. Maybe they just didn't, you know, weren't able to come, or weren't able to respond.
There's as many as a dozen. Yeah, it's not a lot.
It's about a dozen on notice lists.
Okay, but what are people's opinions as far as whether we are going to leave this open for oral testimony or just for an opportunity for people to send us emails and letters?
I'm open for both written and the law.
No, I always am. I mean, just on principle, you know, if nothing else, but I was just...
That sounds like we're open to having it kept open for...
In that case, you should do that with a motion to continue at 6:00 PM Thursday, March 24th, same location.
Okay, is there a motion to that?
I believe that we keep the matter open for the oral testimony, and we'll continue the hearing until March 24th.
Melisha?
Commissioner Burnt?
Yes.
Commissioner Bennett?
Yes.
Commissioner Johnson?
Yes.
Commissioner Patrick?
Yes.
Commissioner Kerr?
Yes.
Chair Lundey?
Yes.
Oh, that could be a good one. Maybe the motion to authorize the chair of the side... Does that need to be interpreted harder?
I sound a little...
I second it.
Commissioner Burnt?
Yes.
Commissioner Bennett?
Yes.
Commissioner Johnson?
Yes.
Commissioner Patrick?
Yes.
Commissioner Kerr?
Yes.
Chair Lundey?
Yes.
Okay. We were going to hold for this, I think we got in our... They're going to talk something about the fate of the economic interests.
Yes, we have the annual statement of economic interest time is coming up. This year, it's going to be done electronically. I think you want to buy a handout sheet of paper, but in the past, these have been entirely paper-driven. This year, it's going to be entirely electronic. And this gives you some instructions about how that's going to go. I think we need a cover letter, but we're going to do this, sorry. I guess the short answer is look this over. You should be getting an email from Colleen at City Hall giving you some instructions about this shortly. And if there are any difficulties at all doing it from your home computer, talk to Colleen, and we'll walk you through it. It's important that you not blow this off. This is one of those things where, you know, you're all on the good side of this. It's not a problem. If you blow it off, you have the Ethics Commission to deal with. And I highly recommend you pay attention to this. So, yeah, if there's any difficulty, schedule problems, computer problems, any of that stuff, Colleen's got this pretty well wired down. She's managing it for all the other committees and boards that have to do this. Plan commissioners are on that list, so this is important.
Thank you. Are there ongoing planning items?
Yes, two items. One is on tree removal amendments. I keep waiting for a slot in your agenda where we've got a little more time to deal with it, and that hasn't happened yet. So I'm hoping that possible, possibly next month will be it, but I'm not so sure about that anymore. The other scheduling consideration is you'll be back up to seven members because the city council scheduled to appoint somebody on Tuesday. I think Charles is not going to be here next month, so, yeah. So next month may not be the time to bring that forward again. If we can't for scheduling, or because of the fatness of our agenda, I guess I'll look to you for some direction on whether you just want to burn the midnight oil or schedule a second meeting. Because it is important that we keep the momentum we have on that. To add to that, the city council authorized me to bring forward about a half dozen, what I'm calling, housekeeping measures to you. And those should be coming to you probably about the same time, the April, May timeframe, so we can get the notices going on. None of those are big deal items, but they are code amendments. Some of them are things we've talked about that the city council wants us to bring forward to them. So I'll bring you, I meant to bring the short version of that to you tonight. I'll email that out to you tonight or tomorrow and give you just a flavor of what we're looking at in broad terms. We might be able to combine this together with the tree amendment items. I don't know, but there's going to be both a work session, hearing, and then recommendations to the city council on a package of some minor amendments, for the most part. The tree ordinance, obviously, is not in the minor category.
So I have the meeting that was Thursday, was Tuesday?
Tuesday. Tuesday, 7:00 PM, this location. Well, I hope I got the notice right on that.
I think you did, I was just kidding.
There you go, that's right.
Yeah.
Okay, good, yeah. But we'll say Tuesday, 7:00 o'clock, and we'll leave this first thing on the agenda.
Why am I living ass? I'm going to shut up here Thursday all by myself.
I didn't leave that. Are there matters of good or the order? Okay. Yeah.
I'm just going to ask Mark. Couple meetings back, Coach Tom. We denied a request for an extension of a deck done by Phil Levana.
Remember that, yes.
I drove by there and noticed that the deck had been completed. And I wanted to make sure that that building permit had been signed off on, and they'd figured out some other way to clear some space.
You did. The problem there was lot coverage, and they removed some hard surface from another part of the lot. If you remember, the square footage played there was actually fairly small. And so they were able to make some...
In the back?
Yeah, from the back of the house.
This was down close to the total amount of ways?
Right, immediately north of that. And they were able to remove hard state from the back of the property, free up that square footage, allow them to get that deck built there. So, yeah, it was reviewed, a permit was issued based on the removal of that hard state.
Mm-hmm, it's an easy solution.
And I guess we're still holding on until we have our new commissioner to try to schedule training.
Yeah, once somebody's appointed, and since at least two of you won't be here in March, I'm going to send out some April dates to look at a training session, if that's okay.
Later in April.
Late, last half of April?
Yeah.
So you're going to be...
I don't want to commit to paying for this.
Won't do any good if you're not paying for this, so, yeah. Good idea.
Oh, no, it would be very...
I'm losing for you.
Now, I'll look at last half of April and on Intimetic for some dates. I'll suggest some dates for you and see what works for you. Design Review Board's going to need to attend that too, so I'll be working with both groups.
Okay, if there's nothing more, I... If I have to turn?
Thanks for...